Hello, just doing a sound check. Hi Supervisor Phillips, can you hear me?
I can. How are you Madam Chair?
Let me try that one more time. I couldn't hear anything. Can I try again?
Can you hear me? No?
Oh, I got you now. Okay, I'm all set. Very good. Thank you.
Chair, I see Supervisor Alejo in the attendee column. He just got moved over.
I'm on, thank you.
Is Chris going to be joining us, Les?
I'm told he is not, but I don't know the latest.
It is 1:00, so let's go ahead and call to order the special meeting of the Monterey County Board of Supervisors. With a roll call from the clerk, please.
Good afternoon. Let the record reflect that all supervisors are present via Zoom except for Supervisor Lopez who is absent.
Great, thank you. We have one item, I believe, on our closed session agenda for this special meeting of the Board of Supervisors. I'll ask County Council chair for any additions or changes.
There are no changes to the agenda, Chair.
Great, thank you. And this is, we have a 1:30 joint meeting with the Housing Authority from Monterey County and the Housing Development Corporation. We will be reconvening back here at the same link at 1:30 to begin that joint meeting. Right now, we're calling to order the Monterey County Board of Supervisors will be recessing into closed session for a brief closed session discussion before we come back to convene the joint meeting. So I see we do have a handful of folks logging on now. You're welcome to stay logged in. We'll be back here at 1:30, but at this point, we will ask if there's any public comment on closed session before we convene into closed session. If you're with us for a public comment on our closed session agenda today, please raise your hand so that I can call on you. Not seeing any hand raises. Is there anyone in chambers this afternoon?
There is not.
All right, well with that, we'll close. Public comment for closed session. The Board of Supervisors will recess to closed session. We will be back here at the same Zoom link at 1:30 for our joint meeting. Thank you. The Board of Supervisors will recess to closed session. We will be back here at the same Zoom link at 1:30 for our joint meeting. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Charles McKee. I'm the county administrative officer. I see everyone trying to join in. I know all the different board members, county and from the housing. There's the chair ask you. I know she was having some bandwidth issues where she is, but now we have chair ask you on, and I think I see Chair John Wizard from the Housing Authority, and I don't know if I see Ms. Byasteros from the Housing Development Corp. Was she on?
I see you there, Charles.
Okay, great. That's good. Thank you. So I think we can call those meetings to order.
All right. And for anyone else who is a member of either board who's not moved over to panelists, I'd please raise your hand so that we can find you and bring you on over. Thank you all for joining us on this special meeting. It's not something that we've done before, having a joint meeting with our Housing Authority and Housing Development Corporation, but I just want to appreciate everyone's partnership and willingness to hop online with us today. So I'm going to welcome everyone and call to order the ask our clerk to do a roll call vote to our call to order for the Monterey County Board of Supervisors, and I'll pass it over to Hakum Chair Wizard and then over to HDC Chair Ballisteros.
Good afternoon. Let the record reflect that all supervisors are present via Zoom except for Supervisor Lopez, who is
All right, passing it over to you Chair Wizard.
Thank you so much, here we ask you. We'll just start with with the roll call here. Commissioner Francine Goodwin. Commissioner Paul Miller. He was here. He had the Dodgers logo. Maybe he'll be back. Commissioner Vivian Gama. Commissioner Kathleen Byasteros. I see her hand raised. Commissioner Kevin Healy. Vice Chair Hans Buder.
Present.
And I'm also here as Chair of the Housing Authority, and so we will hopefully find Commissioner Miller returning very quickly. It appears as though he would be our fourth. So for the time being, Chair Askew, I would pass it to HDC Chair Byasteros.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kathleen Ballisteros, and I will go over again the directors of HTC. I'll start with the Vice Director Miller. Okay, the next one I'll go with Director Goodwin. Then Director Buder.
Present.
Thank you. Director Gama. Director Haley. And then I am the Chair Director Kathleen Ballisteros, and I am present. Thank you.
Chair Root Askew, I received a text message from Commissioner and Vice Chair Miller, and he asked me to send him the link again. So I think it's just a moment before he rejoins us, and we'll have a quorum for both Hakum and HTC.
Fabulous. Okay, so I'll just keep in comments before we move forward while we get Mr. Miller back online again. For anyone who's watching us live on Facebook or YouTube, you're also welcome to hop on over and join us on Zoom. And I don't have that link number in front of me. Is there someone who can announce the Zoom link number, the Zoom webinar number?
Madam Chair, I think it's our regular number 224-397-747. And if there's any commissioners, because they haven't joined this meeting before, if they raise their hand, and then our team could move them over as panelists, so they could be able to be on the screen and be able to speak.
Excellent. Thank you so much Supervisor Alejo. We also have Spanish interpretation available. We should have Spanish interpretation available on Zoom. Can I ask our clerk to make that announcement for Spanish interpretation?
Good afternoon. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Diego Celis. Seré el intérprete en español para la reunión de hoy. Por el fin de interpretar claramente su comentario público, por favor hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Haré una pausa al final de su oración para asegurarse que tengo la oportunidad de interpretar y muchas gracias por su atención.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. See, we have Paul Miller on the attendee side, so help us get him moved over. I'd just like to invite everyone who's joining us today to assist us in upholding a respectful dialogue. We are, I believe, all on Zoom, so if you would keep yourself muted when you're not speaking, that will help us with cross sounds. Please use the raise hand function so that your respective chair can call on you at the appropriate time. And we do have a posted agenda that outlines the process that we will follow to allow our staff to give reports and for each body to engage in discussion. And most importantly, just a reminder that we are all here because we care deeply about our community and want to ensure that we have effective organizations that are working to achieve our shared goals together. So just once again, thank you all for for joining us today. We're gonna start, and let's just see, we got we've got Mr. Miller online now. Is that correct? I see you, Paul.
Yes, yes, I'm here. Thank you. Sorry.
Fabulous. We have a quorum of, perfect, we do now have a quorum of the Board of Supervisors, the Housing Development Corporation, and the Housing Authority for Monterey County. So I'd like to welcome and introduce Eric Lundquist from Monterey County Housing and Community Development to provide a report on the history of the Housing Authority and how the interests of the county and the authority intersect.
Thank you, Chair Askew.
Mr.
Sorry. Thank you, Chair Askew, members of the board, commissioners from the Housing Authority, directors from the Housing Development Corporation, staff in the public. I am Eric Lundquist from Housing Community Development Department. I serve as the county's director of that department. I'm here today to really set the table on housing authorities in general, the Housing Authority for Monterey County, and how the housing authorities' operations intersect with the County Housing and Community Development Department. In the late 30s, 1937, federal legislation was passed establishing federal housing assistance funding. Subsequently, in 1938, California legislators established a housing authority in each the ability to establish a housing authority in each city and county, but those needed to be formed until the city or county adopted a resolution that declared a need for its formation and established the governance structure. And I'll get back to how that was established here in Monterey County, but want to provide you with a bit of background on public housing, which is a unique administrative structure that pairs local administration, local discretion, with federal funding and federal regulations. Public housing properties are owned and managed by quasi-governmental local public housing authorities, often referred to as PHAs. PHAs were, for the most part, created by states in response to the federal government's creation of the low-rent public housing program. They are typically formed with an executive director as well as a governing board. The governing board generally has members appointed by local government officials, but it may also have elected members. The board's role is generally to approve policy, clarify goals, and delegate responsibility and authority to the executive director who acts on its behalf. PHAs have an obligation also to file financial audits, and failure to do so may result in the state comptroller performing audits at the PHA's expense. There are over 3,000 public housing authorities within the nation. Part of this reason why there are so many is based on the local needs, as they are tied to the specific locality such as a county or unit of local government. In recent years, there has been an increase in the number of smaller PHAs that have merged or form consortiums. These mergers or consortiums are designed to allow agencies' programs, particularly the Section 8 voucher program, to be administered across a metropolitan region that crosses jurisdictional boundaries. It also reduces administrative costs. Requiring only one executive director for the merger instead of one for each PHA would achieve efficiencies of scale. Housing authorities really have two primary functions, which I'm sure you're very much all aware of. They are the construction and operation of public housing, including farm worker housing, and the distribution of rent subsidies that includes Section 8 project-based rental assistance and the housing choice voucher program. Policy direction and responsibility for managing the housing authorities are the responsibility of the Board of Commissioners for which you serve. Depending on the jurisdiction's experience with its housing authority and how the jurisdiction sees housing authority's mission, complementing its own goals, the jurisdiction may appoint itself, or Board of Supervisors in this case, as the Board of Commissioners, or it may establish a Community Development Commission, which it has here, to operate the housing authority with an independent commission. The Health and Safety Code does include specific requirements that at least two members of the Board of Commissioners be residents of the Public Housing Commission, and at least one be 62 years of age. The jurisdiction's choice of government includes forming joint authorities with other jurisdictions, appointing an independent Board of Commissioners, or appointing the governing body itself to serve as commissioners, as I just mentioned. In our particular case, the Housing Authority of the County of Monterey was established by the Board of Supervisors, March 17, 1941, just after the federal government passed its United States Housing Act of 1937, and the state's local legislation from 1938. On March 24, 1941, the Board of Supervisors appointed its first five-person commission to oversee the housing authorities' operations. Two additional tenant commissioners have since been added and serve on the now seven-member Board of Commission. Since the housing authorities is a fully separate legal entity from the county, the Housing Authority retains authority to appoint its own executive director, who is responsible for its staffing. The housing authority is non-qualified public housing authority. As a result, it is required to prepare a five-year plan and an annual plan, which are both included in your packet today. There are approximately over 4,000 households in Monterey County benefiting from the Housing Authority's housing voucher program. So there's extreme need in the county for such a program. And in fact, yesterday, I met with interested parties on the project-based voucher program. The Housing Authority, through its subsidiary, Housing Development Corporation, operates approximately 1,077 units of family housing, about 300 units of farmworker housing, senior housing, and other special need population. There are approximately 56 units of transitional housing as well. The Housing Authority created the Monterey Housing Authority Development Corporation, or HDC, not to be confused with the county's agency, HCD, in response to HUD's Rental Assistant Demonstration Program, or RAD. The RAD program was an attempt by the Housing Authority to attract private capital to upgrade public housing properties to allow more market rate units to be included within the development, in essence, an infusion of cash. Public housing units in the RAD program are technically no longer public housing. So with the history on housing authorities, their purpose, and Monterey County's housing authorities also included in your packet today, are a list of suggestions based on some concerns raised in the community to the Housing and Community Development Department. I won't go into those now, although I would like to further your attention to some analysis that staff prepared based on what other jurisdictions are doing. And they are in line currently with what the county is doing, but some are quite different, where the boards or the city councils have appointed themselves to serve as the Board of Commissioners on their housing authorities. So there are some options available to the boards to consider, as I just indicated, and at the appropriate time, I can go into those options at the board's desire. And so with that, I'll conclude my portion of the presentation for now. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Eric, for the history and the background. What we're gonna, if I may ask my colleagues to hold questions and comments until item B on our agenda, I'd like to invite Chair Wizard to introduce the next presentation.
Thank you so much Supervisor Root Askew. We have a very brief slide deck to help sort of guide the conversation, and I'll share my screen now so that we can review it together. Just want to make sure everyone can see that. Great. Thank you so much. So the 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 agency is, you know, as Mr. Lundquist described, Hackham is an independent organization, governmental organization that was established by resolution of the Board of Supervisors. And when we first, as an organization back in 2005, decided to embark on creating a nonprofit to access state and federal and private funds, the intent was to establish a subordinate agency, a subordinate entity. And in a typical arrangement, such a nonprofit development arm remains as an internal department or division within the Housing Authority. However, in 2007, the nonprofit was, the status of it was changed through a change in the bylaws, and it functionally made it so that it was a separate entity. We certainly share, the Commissioners from Hackham are the directors of the nonprofit, but because they are, they have separate executive directors, they have separate legal counsel, they have separate staff, the two are not as coordinated as one would hope. And so that has led to duplication of effort and inefficiencies with regard to financial decision-making, staffing decisions, and of course, our strategic direction, such as which projects get developed, whether we're using, you know, project-based vouchers in one place or the other, and long-term long-term decisions about where to focus development. So I'll move on to the second slide here. Oh, too far. Sorry about that. So the second slide is more about sort of behind the curtain. And this sort of separation over the last almost 15 years has caused the agencies to really go in different directions and almost have, or not almost, but to sort of have an adversarial relationship where Hackham and its professional staff are aware that the prevailing public opinion about the Housing Authority is that it is either incompetent or unavailable or otherwise not able to do its work. However, we remain, we continue to enjoy status as a high-performing housing authority from the Housing and Urban Development Department and have done so for many years. So the negative impacts include difficulty locating a competent executive to lead the agency because there is such tension and friction between Hackham and HDC. There is, you know, the the professional networks are aware of that tension and friction. And so it's very difficult for us to recruit motivated and competent and hungry executive directors who are ready to truly lead the Housing Authority as an agency. And that's also complicated by the fact that because housing authorities receive their funding from the federal government, there are federal rules related to compensation, which is totally proper and appropriate. And one of the ways that you can augment that in high-cost areas, such as the Monterey Peninsula and the Greater Monterey Bay Region, where an executive may be choosing to live if they come to work for us, is that revenue from the nonprofit development arm can in part fund compensation for those executives who work and oversee the activities of the nonprofit. And without the revenue sharing that would support such a mechanism, we find it difficult to attract top-of-their-class, you know, true leaders that would come to an agency that has these institutional problems with its supposedly subordinate and partner agency, the HDC. So on to my third slide here. This creates follow-on problems out in the public. And if ultimately our goal is to serve residents and create safe, decent, and affordable housing and to maintain housing that would otherwise fall into disrepair and need to be rehabilitated, there is disharmony that leads to a lot of missed opportunities. And while we at Hackham are certainly the recipient and agency that disperses the vouchers and supports the overall activity of subsidized housing through the federal government, we don't have sufficient control over the Housing Development Corporation. Nevertheless, the Housing Development Corporation uses Hackham and our federal funding as a baseline to guarantee loans to private equity partners that help them receive private funds for which we end up being minority partners in these LLCs and other corporate bodies, which exposes the Housing Authority to great financial and legal risk. And so, you know, in its independent authority, HDC, the Housing Development Corporation, in our opinion, has begun to experience some mission drift where they are seeking lots of opportunities outside of Monterey County and serving the residents therein, and in fact, are pursuing opportunities in other parts of the country. While we appreciate that, you know, an entrepreneurial spirit may generate additional revenue that otherwise wouldn't have been available, we are clear on the complaints we hear from the public about the availability of project-based vouchers, the availability of project-based vouchers and the accessibility of HUD and Hackham and HDC partnership. And so those two things appear to be in conflict with one another. And the last thing that I would share is that there is an imperfect plan, and I mean that to say that it's not quite fully developed, but there is a plan being considered to more formally and officially separate the two agencies. That plan is coming from outside of the Housing Authority, and that plan would no longer result in a functional split, but an official and legal split between the two. And that, of course, would further complicate the relationship that HUD and Hackham have, as well as the relationship between Hackham and our partners, such as the County Board of Supervisors and its affiliated agencies. So for this last slide, because it is, it talks about the council's recommendation, I'll pass it to
Sorry, could you say that again?
Beg your pardon, my watch is also participating in the meeting. Our legal counsel, who has been advising us on how we sort of put the genie back in the bottle and ensure that the Housing Authority continues its operations, and that be Mistula Brown from Goldfarb Leven.
Hello. Good afternoon, Supervisors, Commissioners, Board of Directors. I was recently engaged by Hackham to assist with the interim ED search as well as operational issues, including their relationship with their nonprofit affiliate, HDC. Just to give you all background, I represent several housing authorities in Northern California. My firm as a whole has probably touched every housing authority in the state in some way. So collectively, I'm bringing a lot of experience working with housing authorities and their nonprofit affiliates. So this is something that's not new to us. And this structure is also not new to us. And so my recommendation to the Housing Authority is that to create more of a cohesion and partnership and to steer away from this toxicity and make sure that the two of them get back to the original mission. I'm recommending that HDC be restructured, to be brought back under the direct control of Hackham, which is in line with standard industry practice, similar to what Eric Lundquist mentioned as part of his presentation, and similar to the way many of my other clients function. So how that would look is that you restructure the nonprofit affiliate such that it's directly controlled by the Housing Authority under the direction of the Housing Authority ED and the governance of the Hackham Board of Commissioners. So let me kind of explain how that functions. I'm gonna say maybe the governance of the Hackham Board of Commissioners is maybe not the correct way of saying it, but you still have two separate legal entities. It's just that, and this was the way it was originally intended. You have two separate legal entities. However, to maintain that control, the executive director of the Housing Authority is also the executive director of the nonprofit affiliate. And so looking back at the original resolutions, creating HDC, that was the original intent. And it appears as though over time, that intent kind of modified, morphed, and we kind of, we've ended up where we are right now. So to get us back to where we originally intended, bringing the structure again of the Hackham-HDC relationship back in line with industry norms where the EDs would be shared. And I love, Eric made this statement in his presentation. He said it would help to achieve efficiencies of scale, and I agree with that 100%. Again, the executive director of Hackham would be the executive director of HCD. We would transition the HCD employees to be direct employees of Hackham. That will not impact continuity. I mean, you'll still have continuity of operations. You still have the same people doing the same work. It's just that the employees would fall under the umbrella of Hackham. They would be direct employees of Hackham. HDC would have no independent employees of their own. And typically, the way that's done, and this is just an example, is you see employee sharing agreements or essentially agreements that say Housing Authority employees will perform a certain functions for the nonprofit affiliate. And by doing that, you still keep the structure of HDC in place. So legal structures of ownership for all of the existing RAD portfolios, other properties, all of that changes. HDC, as a separate legal entity, is still there, still able to conduct the business that it was intended to do, still able to operate the properties and do great work. The only difference is that the staff, since it's going to be reporting directly to the Housing Authority Executive Director, will remain in partnership. And you won't have instances of a runaway train. And then also, what that allows too is that, again, it will ensure that they will not have an opportunity to have this shift of legislative bodies. The Board of Commissioners, who are appointed by the Board of Supervisors, will also remain the Board of Directors of HDC. So there is still going to be that clear line of control and continuity. So that's my recommendation. It's not out of the norm from what any other housing authorities are doing with their affiliates. And I believe Eric, also in his explanation, when he was giving examples, he gave similar examples. And I feel that that's the safest way to keep everything in line. And I'm open to any questions that anybody may have, or.
Thank you so much, Ms. Brown. I'll ask if there are any Commissioners who have questions related to the presentation or Ms. Brown's comments. And then we'll pass it back to Supervisor Reedaskew, who will call on the Supervisors. I don't see any hands or anybody from the Board of Commissioners, so I'll pass it back to the Chair. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you, Chair Wizard. So I saw Supervisor Adams' hand go up first, followed by Supervisor Alejo.
So my question would be to Ms. Brown, and it's simply, what are the snags that you would envision if we were to embark on the plan that you've laid out? What do you picture as the biggest, some of the biggest stumbling blocks or challenges that we'll have to face?
I mean, I don't want to be like an extreme optimist, but I see it as being a very straightforward process because, you know, it's the same people doing the same work, just under a different umbrella. And so I really can't think of of any snags. It's just, I see it simply as a restructuring and moving the pieces around and kind of putting it back to what folks originally intended, so that we stay on course.
You don't anticipate that there would be any resistance from some of the existing staff of the HDC?
I, you know, I will let, I haven't engaged with staff. And I don't know, I'll possibly let the Chair, the Vice Chair, or someone from HDC speak on that. But I don't think the goal is to, again, we're not trying to change their scope of work. We envisioned it as, if you're a property manager, I'm just throwing out roles, you're still going to be a property manager. It's just now, instead of your employer being HDC, your employer would be the Housing Commission. And of course, you're going to have resistance. Let me not, you know, sometimes change is hard for people. But I'm hoping that collectively, they can, folks can kind of see what the goal of this is. It's not to, it's to move forward and for it to make positive change for the community. Because that's ultimately, at the end of the day, that's what this is about. It's about helping Monterey County and the community members and increasing the people that, excuse me, benefiting the people that need their help. So there may be, there's all, I mean, change is hard. I agree.
Thank you.
Supervisor Alejo?
Thank you. So this question is for Ms. Brown or for Mr. Lundquist? If, I know Mr. Lundquist's memo or his presentation pointed out the way the current structure of the housing, between the Housing Authority and the HDC. I know people at home, they hear these acronyms, and it gets confusing, but these are the two entities that have, for us, have been a focus and we're evaluating whether these are, is the best organizational structure and whether it's being efficient in its service to our local communities. So could you just elaborate the different responsibilities Housing Authority has versus the Housing Development Corporation, which your memo pointed out controls and manages 1,770 units of housing for local residents, and there's different types of housing within that number, farmworker and other types of low-income housing units. And also, who, there's two directors in each of these separate entities, but who also controls the 4,100 vouchers in the county, which everybody knows they're hard to get? We have so few compared to the thousands that need it. But, so who, these are like the two most critical, I think, functions and resources the Housing, the HDC has, but there's confusion about who controls what under each director. Can you just briefly explain that?
Sure. Thank you, Supervisor Alejo. And really, you're and really, the answer to your question should come from the Housing Authority or through HDC. And I actually wanted to touch on the intersection of Housing and Community Development Department and those entities. When our Inclusionary Housing Ordinance was first adopted in the 80s, the county had more involvement with the Housing Authority at that time. It provided services to the county. For example, it would income-qualify residents within these projects. We've also partnered in assisting in providing the Housing Authority with funds through Community Development Block Grant, Home, and other resources. But really, today, we don't have much involvement with the Housing Authority. They are managing their vouchers. HDC is managing its projects within its own organizational structures. So I think to get really at the heart of your question, Supervisor, the Housing Authority or HDC should really respond to their organizational structure and how those operations are currently being run.
So I can speak, obviously, extremely high level, and I'm trying to think if, and then maybe, you know, if the Chair of the Housing Authority wants to chime in. But, so I see two things. So the Housing Authority controls the vouchers. But what we have to understand is that they don't have, they don't receive an unlimited number of vouchers, right? There isn't like the voucher tree, and they can get as many as they want. Vouchers are issued to them by HUD. HUD gives them a very finite number. HUD gives them a very finite number. Once that number is used up, it's used up. And essentially, they're at the mercy of, of HUD. And I, and I briefly had a conversation with HUD about that. So I, I can't really give you numbers of what's been issued or allocated or encumbered. Because once, you know, obviously, once the vouchers are encumbered, they're attached to a certain project. And then, and until that status changes, pretty much those vouchers are off the table and it's whatever you have left.
And maybe for Chair Wizard, my understanding, I, I originally assumed that the Housing Authority Director had control over the 4,100 vouchers. But my understanding that that might have been switched in history under the Director of HDC. I'm, I'm just trying to get a clarity on that.
That's not my understanding, but I would defer to the interim executive director and the CFO of the Housing Authority if, and I see that she's joined us now. Ms. Sturgeon, do you have a response to Supervisor Alejo?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so the Housing Choice Voucher Program is managed by the Housing Authority and is under the direction of the Director of Programs, Maria Madera. So that is under the Housing Authority. Because the Housing Authority receives the funding and the vouchers from HUD.
Okay, great, thank you for that. And so I'm going back to the original, one of the original concerns. We're just looking at the organizational efficiency. Because for, you know, I did speak to one of the prior executive directors, Manny Gonzalez, who was there for a short time. And even as a new person who came in and who had worked for the county for such a long time, there was an expression and concerns raised back in 2019 about whether the, the structural or the organizational structure was best serving the community. And he certainly felt that in his role as a Director, pay or control over the housing units really limited the role of the executive director. But, but I'm glad we're having this conversation today to at least look at this first issue. But I think there's a recognition that there's a lot of other issues within the Housing Authority that need to be addressed. Some of those that were stated in, in the letter we sent to the Monterey County Civil Grand Jury. So I hope that this is a beginning of a conversation with the both Commissions of the HDC and the Housing Authority about how we could best make, restructure the Housing Authority, hopefully under one leader. Especially this, this is a critical time as you guys are embarking on looking to hire a new permanent executive director. I think it's imperative that the responsibilities and duties outlined in any job description include the duties of both the HDC and the Housing Authority. So hopefully, we could find that right, experienced and visionary leader that could really help oversee all the programs rather than having this fractured or fragmented organizational structure that exists today. I think that is, that as we continue this work, hopefully, we will learn other things that need to be changed and improved. But from my sense to, you know, I've heard from employees, I heard from community, I heard from former employees, I heard from former leaders. There's, there's a lot that needs to be improved at the Housing Authority. And I know that sometimes, I know the late Jose Gomez, when he first came in, we had a meeting. He had a lot of thoughts and ideas about improvements he wanted to see happen. And he started those. Unfortunately, you know, his, he got sick and his health deteriorated. And may he rest in peace. But I think, I think we will, we, by fixing these problems, would carry on what he intended to do all along. And that is to make the Housing Authority better serve our low-income residents of our community. And sometimes, one person can't do it alone. It takes a committed board. It takes committed support from the community, like our Board of Supervisors. And, and the right staff to make the needed changes, but also change the culture within the office. So that was one of my concerns from hearing from former employees who came in and really described it as a toxic, unprofessional environment. And when that occurs every day in the office, it's hard to keep and retain professional staff. And that also contributes to focusing on office infighting versus serving the community. And that's where the focus and all our energy should be. I know that in, as the co-chair of the Leaving Home Leadership Council, there's been some important meetings that where the Housing Authority was just absent. And we should have representatives at all these key meetings in the community, because the Housing Authority is, is a critical entity to be at the table in all of our efforts. And I know that when we, what I heard in the past was that some, some of the staff felt that those meetings weren't as important and then, and they were many times missing. So, so that's, that, these are like some of the basic functions that we hope in the future we could remedy. And, but it is going to take a lot of work that I hope we could embark on doing in 2022, collaboratively with all the commissioners here today. And I'm, and I'm glad, I want to thank the Chair and the Vice Chair. And now that the Council for expressing a commitment to really work together and to make the needed changes here, because it is going to take some time. But I think it, it needs to happen at all levels within the Housing Authority, organizational and within the office and how it functions out in the community as well. So the only last question I, I would be, would, I would ask is, you know, we sent a referral to the Housing Authority. And I mean, to the Civil Grand Jury. And they usually just do investigations. They do, they release their findings in a report a few months after, after starting their work. And then they usually make recommendations about how to make an organization function better. Their only recommendations. And I've always found that their investigations are very helpful in terms of making improvements. But if they were not to, to investigate this coming year, then another option is for the Commission to do its internal, internal performance and financial audits. To be able to have an outside entity, really look at its structure, make its findings and make its recommendations. I thought that, that that's a question to the Chair of both Commissions of, of whether that might be a possibility to, to not wait for several months for the Housing Authority to do something. But now that we have momentum here, we're meeting in December, that we could do our own internal audits to make findings. And then we could, and give us some insight of recommendations we could also do to make the changes perhaps much sooner.
Madam Chair. Thank you so much Supervisor Alejo, your comments are well heard. You're absolutely right. The Civil Grand Jury is a wonderful resource to help us better understand, you know, sort of the root cause of these problems that we've identified. But ultimately, those recommendations are non-binding. And it's up to those individual agencies to either take them on. Sure, we're required by law to provide a response. But a response is not action, a response is acknowledgement. And so it is, I think, incumbent upon us, regardless of whether the Civil Grand Jury does or not, and we still won't know for some time, to solve problems we can identify. And I don't think anyone is saying that we can't identify the problem we've got. That's why we're here. We know that there is a problem. And so waiting some number of months to, to begin that work seems counterproductive, because we have the momentum now, we have the awareness now, so we can get to work now. And part of the work that we have done at the Housing Authority to, to achieve that is Vice Chair Booter and Housing Commissioner Biosteros and I, as the ad hoc executive, or excuse me, ad hoc recruitment team, recruitment committee, have met more than two dozen times over the last three weeks. And just this past Saturday at 8:00 AM at the Housing, Housing Authority Building, we're interviewing top-tier candidates from across the country to come in on a no more than one-year interim director, interim executive director role. We've interviewed people who worked for HUD and consolidated agencies that were not functioning as desired. We interviewed people who were executive directors of top-10 housing authorities that were actually removed from their post because they dared to integrate communities. We've interviewed people who have the tools and resources and skills and experience to come into the Housing Authority of the County of Monterey and perform at a high level from the very beginning. And we look forward to continuing our relationship with Ms. Sturgeon to facilitate the execution of those contracts, whomever we, we may ultimately choose. And also provide that bridge, as we discussed maybe a week ago now, in terms of the financial and, and strategic range, so that that person isn't blindsided or left kind of holding a bag, wondering what the answers are. And so all those things are in progress and are happening as we speak. But to your point about, you know, looking inward at ourselves, just so that you have some awareness and the rest of the board, we had an issue with the tenant ledgers, the accounts receivable. And there was some friction between whose problem that was to fix and who owned that problem. And a recommendation that I made was that if HDC and Hackham could not together decide on how to facilitate that audit, they couldn't do it in-house, then they would split the cost 50/50 to hire an outside auditor. We couldn't figure out how to do it together. But then we also couldn't find somebody to do that audit, because it was so messy and so difficult. So then we had to do it together. And I've been on the board since February of 2020. We have not made significant process, progress on that problem. The Housing Authority has rerun the numbers two, three, four times, completed the audit of our payments through Section 8. And there is a dispute between the two executives as to what type of accounting is going to be recorded. And so who then owes whom what? That largely cannot happen if there's one executive director and a nonprofit development entity nested within the Housing Authority. And so I, I hear your comments clearly. And I think that you're on the right track. And I would look forward to, you know, a, frank is not the right word, because it doesn't quite have the impact. But, you know, tell us what you want. Because while we are an independent agency, we realize that we are, we as commissioners are appointed by you with the Board of Supervisors. We as the Housing Authority rely on our partnership and a collaboration with the County of Monterey. We are not an island. And if we, you know, we are not political people. We're appointed officials. You have constituencies. You have stakeholders and, and people who in the community rely on you to ensure that government functions well. And if people are telling you supervisors that there are problems, then not only is it your duty and obligation to see those problems fixed, but to make sure that we, as your partner, assist you in that. And so we need you to let us know what you think we can do immediately to remedy some of these problems. And whether there's a majority vote for us to do whatever that may be, that's a different question. But we need to hear clearly from you what your expectations are. And we've heard them over the last week or so. But I, I'm grateful for the opportunity to put a finer point on it today.
Thank you. I'll close my comments just by adding two points. One, for the public to know that Jose Gomez, before he passed away, had asked the San Francisco HUD Office to really look at the dysfunction between the two entities. And I think that memo was enlightening. It showed that there was kind of an inefficiency. And that came from the consultant then, the San Francisco HUD Office. I wanted the public to know that even he had started that work and, and trying to find some better insights. So some of that has already been done. Because the only other piece I wanted to add is that there's some critical projects coming down the pipeline on Project Home Key. These are the hotel conversion projects. We did the first one at the Goodnight Inn. Jose Gomez was still with us then. He was key in, in penciling that project out financially by securing 85 vouchers. And I know our Council, Ms. Brown, expressed the, the difficulty it is to get any, any new vouchers in. But that's where it really takes a leader to be able to advocate and try to pull down and think outside the box to, to bring additional resources to our county. And he secured 85 vouchers that got that project off the ground. Well, there's five other hotel conversion projects coming down this coming year. Three perhaps in Salinas, two in King City. It, for me, that's another example of how imperative it is to have key leadership, good leadership at the Housing Authority that could work in partnership with the counties, with the city, with the county, with the two cities, to hopefully get these projects off the ground that could really provide dozens of more units of permanent supportive housing for our homeless residents in our county. So I just wanted to put that on the table. As we're talking about reforms, there's really a lot of reasons why. And these future projects are, are another reason why we need to have an effective Housing Authority in our county. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. I'll ask for any other board comments or questions. I did have a few and I'll jump in. The, and I guess first of all, I just want to acknowledge that there, there are challenges with the Brown Act, right? This is the only time that we can have these kinds of conversations in a, in a, in a, amongst my colleagues. This is the only kind of public setting that the Housing Authority Commissioners can have a public conversation. And really, the only time that we collectively can all speak together about these issues, get presentations from our staff and really begin to wrap our arms around who has responsibility? Where does authority lie? How do we find consensus about how to best move forward? And the, the Board of Supervisors, for us to really understand what, what are the challenges very specifically when we hear about dysfunction within an agency? What, what are the triggers by which we can be supportive? And I really want to make that really clear to the Housing Authority and HDC commissioners who are on the line with us today, that, you know, your success is essential. We need, we need your work to be effective and successful. Our residents collectively are counting on your ability to govern, to govern these two agencies in a way that is, that serves the significant and tremendous and growing need for affordable housing in our community. So we're here today to try to better understand what our role is as supervisors, but also to provide whatever support, guidance, direction, recommendations that are going to allow us all to, to serve our, our residents. So I also want to think, recognize that our commissioners are volunteers. And they've taken on a tremendous, a tremendous challenge this year, specifically with the passing of the Executive Director and some very significant staff changes. Yeah, Ms. Sturgeon, I want to thank you for staying on board to keep the boat afloat while we try to navigate this. Ms. Brown has just been a phenomenal ally to help us understand, I think, what, what needs to happen and what our varied options are. I want to point back, the, the memo that Eric Lundquist put together, I think, was really helpful. It's a public document. It outlines a number of sort of the historical pieces that he presented today around the Housing Authority, around housing, public housing. The memo that, the report that Supervisor Alejo mentioned from Econometrica, which was some observations and options pertaining to the organizational relationship between the Housing Authority and the Development Corporation. I also have had numerous conversations with folks locally, as well as throughout the state, about how housing authorities function, where they have challenges, what opportunities we may be leaving on the table locally, because we're not aligned and working in coordination with one another. And I also want to just, a big shout out and thanks to Chair and Vice Chair for reaching out earlier this year, when it became clear that there were some, you know, some lack of clarity about the best way forward. So being able to bring in County Council and County, and other County Department heads to help provide some additional guidance and information. So with that, I will, just process-wise, we'll finish up this discussion here. I'll take it over to Supervisor Phillips. I'm then going to take it out to public comment. So anyone who would like to share your thoughts, weigh in, we'll open public comment. Please raise your hand so that we can call on you. And then we'll bring it back. What we have agenda is, I think, is for the board, next is for the Board of Supervisors to consider providing recommendations to the Housing Authority and HDC to address current issues. And then to give the Housing Authority Commissioners the opportunity to take any action that they may like to take in response to those recommendations. And then we have a final, provide appropriate direction to staff as appropriate before we wrap up our meeting today. But with that, I'll close up this conversation with Supervisor Phillips.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I concur in your comments and Supervisor Leo's comments. And I appreciate the comments also made by Mr. Wizard. We've all been aware now, this has been a problem that existed for some time, long before the existing commissioners on there. But it, it, it is a dysfunctional situation. And, and John Wizard asked what, and my thoughts are what everybody else that, that has analyzed this has said, we have to bring the Housing Development Corporation in. So we have one entity into the Housing Authority. And I, I think, as was mentioned, an outside audit, financial and performance audit ought to be instituted as soon as possible. And, and I think was what John Wizard mentioned is critical, is bringing in an experienced interim executive director who has who has experience in running a Housing Authority the way it should be run. And I think those things are are critical. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. All right, so I think we're wrapping up this item. I wanted to ask Mr. Lundquist to summarize any board action that we've taken to date and again, present options that the board might consider in our discussions today about how we can recommend best supporting the Housing Authority as they move forward. And then we'll go to public comment, then bring it back for board discussion.
Thank you, Chair. Ask you, I think, just what the board action that has occurred to date is quite simple. The the board back in nineteen forty-one established a Board of Commissions to oversee the Housing Authority. That's evolved a bit over time to what you're seeing today. In listening into the Board of Supervisors today and also the Board of Commissioners and the Directors, it definitely sounds like that the discussions leading towards an option that I raised in the board report, which was to consolidate the entities under one Executive Director in order to look at restructuring the agencies, providing more efficiency and accountability, which are or is allowed within the federal and state guidance. There are some other options. I heard Supervisor Phillips just mentioned some. Supervisor Alejo also mentioned some others, Supervisor Adams as well and yourself. Those were also defined in the staff report and I can go into them. But it seems to me like the the conversation is leading towards the one Executive Director overseeing the two entities. So I'll leave it at that for now unless the the board has further questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Supervisor Alejo.
Put options on the table and then we could get, so the public could perhaps comment on them. For for our board, certainly, the recommend, because we have to, as a board supervisor, we would make a recommendation to the HDC and the Housing Authority Commissioners to recommend the merger of the Housing Authority and HDC as just described by Mr. Lundquist. The second would be, I think, what both Supervisor Phillips and I expressed, recommend the Commissioners of both entities do a financial and performance audit. That way, we don't have to wait on whether the civil grand jury conducts an investigation or not. On the on the Board of Supervisor side, though, I think what we can do today is also create, vote to create an ad hoc committee of at least a couple, well, of two supervisors that could then work on, could do the follow through with the Commissioners in the interim. I know we're going into winter break, but we could perhaps collaborate and bring information back to our full board in future meetings on, for example, the recruitment of an Executive Director that we've been invited to participate in. And also looking at other reforms that need to happen that could be ongoing, working closely with the Commissioners on other reforms that need to be implemented. The other thing I would put is just perhaps coming, our staff coming back to us in January, just looking at governance options. I know my referral looked at, addresses the merger, but also whether the Board of Supervisors needed to step in temporarily as a governing board or whether we could create a separate governance structure or continue as with our Commissioners, knowing that there's an openness to try to make the needed reforms and then we could work collaboratively. So there's there's at least two, three options there. I'm looking at governance, but I want to, as terms of direction, having staff look at that and then come back for us after we have some more vetting of options. And I think work that will happen over the next month with our Commissioners, what I think will tell us as supervisors whether we really need to step in as the governing board or whether we have the possibility of just working collaboratively to make the needed changes. So that would be that last potential direction is staff to come back to us in January. Thank you.
Great, perfect. I think that summarizes everything that I've heard discussed very well. All right, with that, we're going to open it up for public comment. We'll put three minutes on the clock. If you'd like to join us for public comment, please do raise your hand so that we can call on you. And I don't like interrupting people, so please do watch the timer and make sure you get get everything in there before we have to interrupt. We're going to start with Mariela, followed by Jane. And Mariela, you'll need to unmute them on your side. We've given you permission to unmute your microphone to share comment.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Maria Vaez. I am a community member. And the purpose of public organization is to serve its community. But how can it do so when its employees are overlooked? I came to speak up on behalf of some Housing Authority employees. They can speak for themselves because they can get fired or retaliated, but I can't because I am not an employee and there's nothing they can do to me. Our Salinas community faces one of the most crucial and devastating humane issues, which is housing. We have a very high cost of living while most of our community have low levels of education and as well, low levels of income. Housing services play a tremendous role in our community. Families depend on them to prevent homelessness. If our employees are not protected, are not empowered, are not satisfied with their job, how can they help others? Employees describe their work environment as coercive and toxic, which hurts employees and clients. This is a crucial department of our community. Housing Authority is understaffed and are going to continue understaffed because no one would like to work under a scrutinizing management where employees' opinions are not taken into consideration. I ask that positive and employee empowerment management strategies are employed so our community servers can provide a better service to our community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm Mariela. And I think we're going to work with a three-minute timer, just to be clear. So Mariela, if you had any additional comments, I can finish it up, but it sounded like we got everything there.
Yeah.
I was going to go next.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Alejo for what he said. He just, you know, I was just excited for what he said. He, thank you for speaking for for our community. Everything you said is true. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us for our meeting today and for your comments. We were going to go next to Jane. Did we have Jane? I lost the hand. So we'll move next to Julieta and then we'll circle back to Jane.
Si gracias. Hola buenas tardes. Voy a hablar en español.
And could we get our Spanish interpreter to provide interpretation and please announce how that will work?
Si, por favor, si puede decir sus relaciones lentamente y a mí una oportunidad de traducir al inglés. They will speak in short sentences and I will translate back into English for the board. Thank you.
Si, mi nombre es Julieta Loredo. Y estoy aquí para dar mi comentario y mi apoyo.
My name is Julieta Loredo and I'm here to give my comment and support.
A los empleados de Housing Authority.
To the Housing Authority employees.
Como residente de este condado por más de veinte años.
As a resident of this county for more than twenty years.
Considero que el rol que esta entidad juega es crítico.
I believe the role that this entity plays is very critical.
Y más ahora que la vivienda es una prioridad.
Especially now that housing is a priority.
Por eso creo que los empleados deben tener la capacidad.
That's why I believe the employees must have the capacity.
Tanto profesional como emocional.
Professional as well as mentally.
Para dar servicio a nuestra comunidad.
To be able to provide services to our community.
Y les, por eso les pido hoy.
That's what I'm asking you today.
Que se revisen los procesos internos.
That would review, that you would please review the internal processes.
Para que los empleados se sientan cómodos.
So that the employees will feel comfortable.
Expresando sus necesidades y sus pensamientos.
Expressing their ideas as well as their needs.
Sin esperar represalias.
Without being recommended.
Es por eso que estoy aquí en nombre de ellos.
And that's the reason why I'm here on behalf of them.
Pidiendo que les den el apoyo.
Asking you to please give them the support.
Que necesitan para desarrollar su trabajo.
That they need in order to develop their employment.
Con la suficiente seguridad que su voz está siendo escuchada.
To be sure that their voices are heard.
Y que la comunicación y la transparencia.
And that communication and transparency.
Existe en todos los procesos.
Will exist in all the processes.
Que les afectan en su trabajo.
That affects their performance at their job.
Esto ayudaría a mantener.
This will help to maintain.
El personal suficiente.
Enough personnel.
Para dar el servicio de calidad.
To provide a quality service.
Y con compasión y profesionalismo.
With professionalism and compassion.
Que merecemos los residentes de este condado.
That the residents of this county deserve.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments today, Julieta. We really appreciate having you join us. Next up, we have Jane. Jane, we've given you permission to unmute. Thank you for your comments.
I think I might mute it. Can you hear me?
We've got you loud and clear. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I'm Jane Barr, Associate Director of Real Estate Development for Eden Housing's Monterey Bay Region. Eden owns, operates and provides services to four hundred and eighty units and seven properties in Monterey County. I applaud this much needed review. It was distressing to learn about HDC's, their attention has moved to development outside of both Monterey County and California. And I strongly support one Executive Director overseeing both agencies. And request that you review the policy that allows the HDC to develop outside of the county. I believe it's way past the point where this can be fixed in-house between the agencies. And there, I know there has been past concern about project-based vouchers in the past going to the development company without proper public process or an RFP to allow competition for project-based vouchers. Also, as a member of the Coalition of Homeless Service Providers Housing Pipeline Committee, we created a subcommittee in regard to housing assistant Housing Authority vouchers due to our concerns as well. We met this past week with presentations and petition based patient by both HACME staff and the Housing Authority Santa Cruz County Executive Director and had a very good discussion. I suggest you take a look at this Housing Authority Santa Cruz County as a role model. It has some very strong progressive programs. One, the landlord program in regard to security deposits, guaranteeing security deposits and damages program that induces more property owners to participate. And two, their funding of project-based vouchers to increase the number of units dedicated to the Housing Authority, those on the Housing Authority waitlist. It's going to be a slog in the turnaround of this agency. And I appreciate that you are looking at a one-year interim director. I think that's extremely important to bring someone in immediately to, you know, in order not to lose more employees. But I ask you to look into the possibility of combining the Housing Authority of County Monterey with the Housing Authority Santa Cruz County into one entity. It may be unusual, but it's not unheard of and could be allowed. And I think combining a very strong agency that has very good programs with one that needs turnaround might be the quickest and best way to turn around this agency. And I, you know, I, as an affordable housing developer, want to have the Housing Authority of County Monterey be as effective as it can and in its ability to serve the Monterey County population. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane, for all the work that you do for housing in Monterey County and across our region. Is there any other public comments today? We did invite the County, Monterey County Housing Advisory Commission to tune in and listen. I'm not sure if there's anyone there who had public comment. But this will be the final call for public comment. Is there anyone in chambers for public comment today?
There's no one in chambers.
All right, very good. All right, with that, I'm going to close public comment. Bring it back to the Board of, all of our boards for some discussion. The agendized item that we're on at this point is to have the Board of Supervisors consider making a recommendation to the HACME Board of Directors and the Housing Development Corporation Board for how to address current issues moving forward. We've had some robust discussion and I think just to restate some of the options that have been presented would be, one, for the Board of Supervisors to support the consolidation of HDC under HACME as presented in the slide deck from HACME. A second action could be to undertake, to recommend that the Housing Authority undertake an internal audit on their finances and performance. Pardon me, a third recommendation could be for the Board of Supervisors to create an ad hoc committee that would work with HACME on their Executive Director recruitment and other necessary reforms. And thank you Supervisor Alejo for laying these out so clearly that I think we just make sure everyone's on the same page here. And then a fourth action that the Board of Supervisors could consider taking today would be to direct our own county staff to continue exploring opportunities for the, for the county to better understand and support an effective HACME governance structure moving forward. I support all, you'll make that the motion. All right. And I was going to say I'll second that. I can support all four of those. And I think it's helpful to know that there is, that this is, that this recommendation that we are making today is something that came from the Housing Authority, at least the Chair, Vice Chair and the Council that they've retained. So it sounds like it's something that they would need to take their own action to proceed with those with those actions. So our action today would just be to recommend, to recommend that they pursue these items. We've got hands raised by Supervisor Adams and then Phillips. So let's continue our local discussion here.
Thank you.
Supervisor Adams?
Yes, thanks so much. And I agree with all of the things that have been, have been listed in your proposed motion. The only thing I would like to add is to, when we're doing the research into what the appropriate governance structure would be, that we would include looking at the possibility of a regional approach, which would include some sort of collaboration with Santa Cruz County.
Thank you. And Supervisor Phillips?
Well, I think at least, at the very least, Ms. Barr mentioned that and she's well respected. We all worked with her. She has a lot of knowledge, at least might be in the process, looking at the model that they're using in Santa Cruz to see if we can learn something from it. But no, I would support the motion and if we're forming an ad hoc committee, I'd like to see you, Madam Chair and Supervisor Leo be a part of our ad hoc committee if you're willing to accept that responsibility. So, thank you.
And I most certainly would agree with Supervisor Phillips.
I was going to recommend you Supervisor Phillips or Chris Lopez. He's not here, so we could fund that one.
Well, you're retiring. You're retiring as chair soon, so you need something to fill your time, you know, so.
Yes, of course. No, I'm happy to serve wherever, wherever is needed. And just, we also do have the 4-H Commission as well, which, you know, is well suited to, I think, tackle ongoing monitoring of some of these big issues. But we would support the ad hoc. I think immediately there's a focus attention that would be beneficial. So happy to do so. Supervisor Alejo?
Yeah, I would accept as well as I think, I've been wanting to work on this for some time now. And I wanted to say that this, the issues that the Housing Authority originally came from employees that brought issues to my attention going back two, two years ago. And that's why I followed through and filing that first request for the civil grand jury to get involved. They didn't act back then, but I didn't forget about it. But since then, I, that's when I also heard repeated concerns coming from former employees, the former director, Manny Gonzalez, who wanted to be here today, but he's visiting his mom for the holidays in The former director, Manny Gonzalez, who wanted to be here today, but he's visiting his mom for the holidays in Arizona. But hopefully he'll come and speak at our next meeting on this topic. Then I heard from housing advocates, I heard from homelessness advocates, their opinions, their insights. So it's come from a lot of former employees, I should say also. So I've heard from a lot of different folks with a lot more hands-on and people with a lot more insight than I could ever have. So, but after hearing the same thing from a lot of different people, you know that there's a lot of issues to be able to work on. But just to, you know, I'm glad we're taking forward. I just wanted to express to all the commissioners here that this is about, I think we want to, our goal is to hopefully work together and make the needed changes. I think the Board of Supervisors, we're so busy on a lot of issues. But we do want to rectify the situation to move, to make the agency better serve the community. That's the goal. And I hope that our expression of interest and support will hopefully empower you to make the needed changes that I think we all need to see. And it's not just the easier ones. The harder ones is really gonna change, it's gonna take some time to change some practices and protocols. Sometimes things that have happened that certain way for too long that we need to change it and put those protocols in place to stop some of the practices from taking place. But it's also about, I want to go back to the office culture. Because they're really, I think, everybody who works in public off and public service, who works in government, we all know that it's a different calling. It's a noble cause because we're serving the community. We're trying to solve local community problems, some of the most challenging. And sometimes we are trying to help the most vulnerable, vulnerable in our community. And I think every employee, when they go to work, and I know I take this when they, for our encounter employees, I want every employee, when they go to work, that they get up in the morning, they want to look forward to working, that there's a work where they feel, work environment where they feel supported. And in turn, they're gonna be proud to serve the community and help them solve their everyday problems. When, when there's an office culture where they're fighting each other or where managers or supervisors are, are power tripping on, on the rank and file employees, certainly that is not conducive to serving the community. So that, I know it's gonna take some time, but with the right leader and with the right professional standards and with the accountability that needs to be there, I hope that things will change in the office so that everyone at that, in the future, will know when you work for the Housing Authority, it's a professional agency. There's collegiality, there's teamwork, and there's support within the office and from all levels of management as well. And I saw, so I hope that in this process, we're not forgetting the most basic functions. It's employees and it's how they feel working, going to work every day. And that also needs to be an imperative part of the reforms we hope to see in the coming months. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Phillips?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, some people approached us and said, well, you know, you gotta look what happened in some other jurisdictions. And we think the Board of Supervisors may have to take over this Housing Authority. And I, I think what we've come up with now, and assuming the majority of the of the Housing Authority follows our recommendations, I think we avoid that. And I think we're, we get on the right track and get moving on the right track. And so I don't think we need to take that bigger step that we were talking about. Something goes awry in the way, then that's always something in the background. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
No, thank you. And before we take a roll call vote, I just wanted to give Chair Ballasteros just a chance as the Chair of the HDC, which we've had quite a bit of conversation about, a chance to make any final comments or to weigh in if there was anything you wanted to comment on.
Thank you, Supervisor Askew. My name's Kathleen Ballasteros, and I am the Chair Director for HDC. So being working, because I bought, you know, I'm a Commissioner with the Housing Authority, then I'm a Director with HDC. So I received everything that was mentioned, every comment, especially public comments. I had mentioned in a meeting that I had with Supervisor Aleho last week. And I mentioned to him, I wish that these employees would have came to the Commissioners at a board meeting and mentioned to them how they were being treated, because they would have been addressed. Me being a public servant, I just finished and I retired at the end of this month. And I just want to tell you, serving in public, you know, in the public office, it's very important to go to work and know that you're doing your job and you want to serve your community. And, you know, tending to, to the community and serving them in whatever agency you're at. And me thinking about these employees, they were not, I don't know, they, either they were harassed or whatever. I am very, I have noted it down. I will be, you know, mentioning it. But in regards to HDC, I do know that we have a meeting scheduled right after this joint meeting. And we'll be tending to things that are, that will need our attention, discussion, and then action. So just to let you know, and I do want you to know that housing is very important to our community. And it is important that every, every family that qualifies for house, for affordable housing should be given the opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair, for your, for your work. And as a public servant, I think that the shared commitment to, to housing and the need that affordable housing continues to be just the number one issue that affects everyone across our community. So thank you again for your service. With that, we'll take a roll call. I'll just make sure, staff, are we clear? Eric, Charles, are we clear? Everyone's clear on the motion that we have on the floor? Do we need to clarify anything?
I think I understand it, and I just, I think we can go back and listen to the recording if we have any questions.
And Madam Chair, I guess, we're just gonna include in the motion for the ad hoc that it would be both of us serving on there, just to, just to make it official part of it.
Okay, very good. Yeah, I get the comment from Chair Adams about also looking at regional coordination and ideas about what's happening in Santa Cruz.
Exactly, and that's what I was going to add in. Thank you.
All right, with that, let's take a roll call. Okay, what was that, Eric?
I was, I was just going to offer, we have scheduled for the January 11th board meeting a preliminary response to Supervisor Leho's referral. With, within that preliminary, preliminary response, we can address some of these initial questions raised by the Board with regards to the opportunities to consider the governance.
Wonderful. All right, could we get a roll call vote for the Board of Supervisors, please?
Certainly. Supervisor Leho?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Lopez is absent. Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
Chair Supervisor Root Askew?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, our motion carries. Thank you all. I'm gonna pass the microphone back over to Chair Wizard and then to Chair Ballasteros for any action that you would like your board to consider or take.
Great, thank you so much, Chair Askew. I am thrilled to hear some specific and clear recommendations from the Board of Supervisors. And I think it really helps us shape our conversation and consider the things that we need to do. I see Vice Chair Booter has his hands up, hand up. Go ahead, Vice Chair Booter. Thanks, Chair Wizard. I wanted to echo that. I appreciate the, you know, the clear guidance from the Board of Supervisors. And I appreciate you digging into some of the granular details here and, you know, being a catalyst to spur some, you know, I think so much needed change. I would like to go ahead and make three separate motions on behalf of, as a member of the Hackham Board of Commissioners that really mirror, I think, what we just heard from the Board of Supervisors. So first, I'd like to make a motion to consolidate control of HDC under Hackham with the Executive Director of Hackham serving as the Executive Director of both entities, Hackham and HDC. Second, I would like Hackham to undertake a comprehensive financial and performance audit in line with the recommendation of the Board of Supervisors. And then third, a motion to direct Hackham's existing ad hoc committee to work with the Board of Supervisors newly formed ad hoc committee on executive recruitment and any additional issues related to Hackham's organizational performance and governance. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second for one, two, or all three of those motions?
I second.
So it's been properly moved by Vice Chair Booter and seconded by Commissioner Ballasteros. Without dissent, we'll consider all three with a single vote unless Ms. Brown has any reservations about that.
No, I do not.
I see, is it about the mechanics of this, Mr. McKee? I see another Commissioner's got his hand up, so go ahead.
Yes, it is. And I didn't know whether Sturgeon or if you're, if you have a, your board clerk is on. I don't know who would be managing the vote as well as the taking of your minutes.
I think we'll be relying on the video as well, and I see Ms. Sturgeon indicating that she is serving in that capacity now. Thank you very much, Ms. McKee. And Commissioner Miller, go ahead.
So just a comment. I'm concerned about the first motion without us having a comprehensive outside look as to why these problems exist. I'll just be honest with you, the majority of the problems since I've been a Commissioner that I've seen that have to do with things are coming out of the Housing Authority side of it. It's just the reality of it. It's what it is. And to just automatically put control over our development corporation under the organization that I see that has created a lot of these issues that we have, concerns me. The other two issues, I'm perfectly fine with. But the first one, I believe that we need to have an outside consultant come in, take a look at what's going on there, and figure things out as to whether or not that's truly what we need to do, that that's really going to best serve the people of Monterey County and allow us to continue to develop affordable housing. I think just taking that action without having a true understanding of how the breakdowns happen is this kind of dangerous, in my opinion. So those are my options. So I would ask if you are gonna bring these motions up, that you bring them up separately so that I can vote accordingly, please.
Certainly. Thank you very much, Commissioner Miller. Are there any other comments or discussion on the second?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Goodwin.
Okay, assuming we were to blend the two entities, how would this impact Starla Warren in her position?
I can speak very briefly and sort of generally about that, and then defer to the attorney, Ms. Brown. But it was my understanding that she had said that everybody would consolidate into one agency and continue their work that they're already doing today.
But unless I misunderstand, isn't she like the Executive Director over HDC?
Yes, I think that is correct. And since we have not yet had the opportunity to discuss sort of what it is, rather, not, I'm sorry, not what it is, but what, how this works, but just the direction we'd like to go, there's no, that's still up to us, you know, as the HDC Board that plans to meet right after this meeting. We can have that discussion and figure out the particulars on all of that. But since the Hackham Board is having a conversation for the, you know, this five-minute window about this particular topic, I hesitate to get into a lot of details about what HDC might do, since this is the Hackham Board that's talking.
Okay, well, thank you. But I do, I kind of do, I do agree with Commissioner Miller in that that should be kind of a separate subject.
Okay, we'll definitely divide the question, and we'll take the three motions independently. Okay. Thank you. Final call for questions or comments on the second, and then we'll move to the vote. I don't see anybody else's hands up, so I'll ask the third, let me see, let me return to my notes. I beg your pardon. The third item, Vice Chair Booter, your third motion was to form an ad hoc committee. So.
It was to direct Hackham's existing ad hoc committee to work with the Board of Supervisors ad hoc committee.
Okay, so that's the motion we'll take first is the existing ad hoc committee of Hackham to work with the Board of Supervisors in response to the Board of Supervisors standing up their own ad hoc committee. Ms. Sturgeon, are you able to call the roll?
Okay, Chair Wizard?
Aye.
Vice Chair Booter?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballasteros?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
And Commissioner Goodwin?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, that one passed unanimously, and we'll now move to Vice Chair Booter's second motion, which was for a comprehensive financial and performance audit. Can we have a roll call, please?
Okay, Chair Wizard?
Aye.
Vice Chair Booter?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballasteros?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
And Commissioner Goodwin?
Yes.
Pass.
Great, thank you so much. And before we vote on this last item, I just want to ensure that the other Commissioners know that I've heard them and that I understand your concerns. I am also hearing the Board of Supervisors and their concerns. And I know that while we're all independent agencies, you know, we've heard the Supervisors say very clearly about merging the Housing Authority with Santa Cruz. We've heard them very clearly talk about dismissing us and running the agency on their own. We've heard very clearly about multiple referrals to the civil grand jury. And so while this motion may give some Commissioners pause, there's no temporal condition, there's no speed attached to this. So there's no reason why, if a majority of the Commissioners or Directors of HDC feel as though motion two should come before motion one, that that's not something that could happen. So I hear you, and I would ask that you support the motion to figure out how to make these agencies work better together, even if that comes after an audit, as you might see fit in your vote. A roll call vote, please.
Hey, Chair Wizard?
Aye.
Vice Chair Booter?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballasteros?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
And Commissioner Goodwin?
Let me say no.
Sounds, Commissioner, or excuse me, Ms. Sturgeon, sounds as though the motion passed three to two.
Three to two.
With two not present.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Chair Root Askew?
Great, thank you. And we're gonna give, this was an action from the Housing Authority Board. I wanted to pass the microphone back over to Chair Ballasteros to see if there was any action that the DSC Board intended to take at this time as well.
Thank you, Supervisor Root Askew. So what I'm gonna do is, I don't know if Starla or Nora are in the meeting. Starla, are you there? Starla Warren?
We're pulling her in. Hold on, Starla, we'll give you, yep, we've given Starla. There we go.
I'm here, Director Ballasteros.
Good afternoon, Starla. So what I wanted to do is to just to follow. just to follow if we could add it to, to, we could agenda, agenda days, I don't know how to say that word.
Director Ballastros, we're having a, HTC is having a meeting at three.
Okay.
Shortly after this, I think that you could bring up any actions or proposed actions that you might want to talk about at that time.
Okay, we can do that, so, um, we'll, we'll do, we'll be having a meeting following this joint meeting and we will, I have taken notes and I will bring it to bring the recommendations from the Board of Supervisors to the meeting, and then we could have the discussion at that time and I want you to, I want to publicly comment that I want, I support the recommendations and we will follow through as we gather at that time in that meeting for the HTC Board of Directors to meet along with Starla Warren and her staff.
Chair Baisteros?
Yes.
I, you know, maybe this is a question for an attorney, there are several on the call. Since HTC is currently impaneled now, and I don't know that the HTC agenda for the 3pm meeting includes any time or agenda items for action, I would offer a complimentary and duplicate motion as to what Commissioner Buter made in the H, in the HACOM portion.
Okay. Do, um, is Ms. Brown there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, can you kind of give us some guidance?
Sure. So we can separate it similarly to the way the HACOM board did it. So, and we can actually combine the, or we can do them individually. So the first motion would be to conduct an internal audit on financial, on, on finances. Well, should we call it a performance audit, but motion to conduct an internal audit on finances and performance, so that would be the first motion. You would need a first and a second on that. The second motion would be to, I, I don't believe HTC has an ad hoc restructuring committee or an ad hoc committee that's been created, so it would be actually a motion to create an ad hoc committee to address restructuring. That would be the second motion, and then the third motion would be the motion to consolidate control. So any one of this, any one of the hack, HTC directors can make that motion.
I would withdraw my previous motion and make that motion as explained by Ms. Brown.
I would second it.
Okay, thank you. So, um, Starla, did you get the motion?
Yes, we will get that also off of the recording. I mean, I think it's been repeated several times, so.
Can we then begin with the roll call?
I can do the roll call. Director Kathleen Ballasteros?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul Miller?
So is this for which? Which one of the motions? Are we separating all three again and create, or separating the two that HTC?
Don't have an ad hoc committee, so you'd have to handle that in a meeting that follows this one. I think that it's gonna be a lot cleaner from a board action perspective. If you, the, I know that Director Wizard has brought up actionable items on the agenda, but I think that you could always have another special board, special meeting to agenda specifically what the items are. It might be a little cleaner than.
We can, we can actually separate them right now, so Director Wizard, I don't know if you want to separate out and do, just do them all individually and do separate roll call votes for each.
Sure, Madam Chair, just as we did with HACOM, I would ask that we divide the question into three separate votes.
Okay. So let's go ahead and begin to create an ad hoc committee so that we can meet with the Board of Supervisors.
And so would you like me to make a roll call on that particular motion?
Yes.
So do I need a second?
Do I have a second?
We already moved and seconded it, we're just taking them independently as instead.
Oh, okay, all right. Go ahead, Starla.
Director Ballasteros?
Yes.
And Paul Miller?
Yes.
Director Hans Buter?
Yes.
Director Francine Goodwin?
Yes.
And Director John Wizard?
Aye.
Okay, now for the second one, would be the one to perform financial and performance audit.
I mean, knowing that it's been moved in second, Director Kathleen Ballasteros?
Yes.
Director Paul Miller?
Yes.
Director Hans Buter?
Yes.
Director Francine Goodwin?
Yes.
Director John Wizard?
Aye.
And your motion has passed.
Okay, and then the third one is, um, so the third one is that the one where we consolidate HTC and HACOM as one agency, or is that one gonna be for discussion?
No, I think that's number three. It's to consolidate exactly what you said, control of HTC under HACOM. Um, yes.
Okay.
Just what?
Okay, go ahead and roll call, Starla.
Kathleen Ballasteros?
Yes.
Paul Miller?
No.
Director Hans Buter?
Yes.
Director Francine Goodwin?
No.
And Director John Wizard?
Aye.
Three to two.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Root Askew. I turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. Um, let's see here, I think our final item on the agenda today is to provide appropriate direction to staff as appropriate, which I think has just happened, unless there's any additional direction that my board wants to provide to our staff. All, any hands, any additional direction? I'm not seeing any hands raised, so I'll, we'll circle around Supervisor Alejo, did you have additional direction that you wanted to provide to county staff?
Wanted to, I just want, Madam Chair, I just wanted to express that looking at the governance structure, just, just seeing some of the, the comments made, I mean, this is urgent, I think there's a clear expression of concern coming from the Board of Supervisors and if, 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 if there's gonna be an inability, I just wanted to, just so the record, I think the next month will be very telling, but if there's an inability to make the needed changes and if there's gonna be an effort to protect the status quo, I think that's gonna be very concerning for us, so I just wanted to, I think that's why we're, it's good that we're meeting today. We're going into the holidays, we're gonna meet again in, in January, at least the board, and hopefully with our ad hocs, we will kind of gauge if, if there's gonna be the will to make the needed changes or whether we as a Board of Supervisors need, need to step in temporarily so that we can make the changes. There, there's no doubt, I, I think the memo by the consultant from the San Francisco HUD office made clear the dysfunction, how two boards are at odds with each other in terms of the mission. So I, I just, before we finish our meeting today, I want to express my concern hearing some of the comments and that, that I, it was my hope that we could work to make the needed changes, but if, if, if if, if there's gonna be that resistance to it, then I think that's where my, our board would consider we have to come in temporarily because we need to make the changes. We don't need any more studies, we need studies to see what are the forms we need to make, but I think the issue about whether there's a need to merge two entities in light of the San Francisco HUD Office's memo, if there's any doubts still about that, that's troubling for me, and I just wanted to express that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Phillips?
I concur completely. We gave direction and, and bottom line, if it's not followed through and they don't follow through on it, we don't have any choice. And it has to be done, and if it's obstructed, then I think we have no choice but to step in and, and take it over, whether it's temporarily or longer, so. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I do, I think that I would just echo the urgency that my colleagues have communicated. Just that the, the calling of a special meeting the week before Christmas isn't something that our board typically does, but the feeling was that there, that, that this is a timeliness, that there isn't, that there is a significant urgency to taking steps to consolidate. And I would just say that I also want to recognize that, again, like I said before, because of the Brown Act, it's really difficult to build consensus about these things and for everyone to have the chance to communicate internally and to get all your questions answered prior to walking into a meeting like this. And so I want to acknowledge that and encourage anyone who, who may have, need more information so that you feel comfortable moving forward in alignment with where the board's recommendation is to reach out to any one of us. You can't talk to your other folks on your commission because that would be a Brown Act violation, but if you need to chat with Eric Lundquist, chat with your attorney, communicate with, with, with others to, to clearly understand how, how critical this particular situation is, please do so, and, and again, really appreciate the volunteer nature that you as of all stepped up to, to take on these really significant roles. How, housing in our community is, is the most critical issue that we're facing and ensuring that we have the most effective and efficient organizations taking advantage of every single federal dollar that's available to us. I do feel like it's important. Our board is not able to give you a direct direction, give the HACOM or the HTC board direction today, but I do just want to emphasize that it was a strong recommendation that I do hope you're able to follow through with. With that, I'm going to, let's see here, so any other appropriate direction, I'm gonna pass it to our County Council Les Gerard, and then we'll just invite all three chairs to make any final closing comments, County Council.
Thank you Chair, just a reminder, I would request that our Board of Supervisors recess back into closed session. We have a couple of things to follow up on. They can use the same invitation that we used earlier, so just a reminder of that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chair Wizard, any, any final comments? Before we adjourn?
So much, Madam Chair, just very quickly, wanted to thank everybody for making time four days before Christmas and that those Commissioners, like you said, as volunteers, those Commissioners that gave up their afternoon on a workday to be here and, and take care of this important business. And I also want to thank the leader up in direction from the Board of Supervisors. You know, I appreciate that we're all individual agencies, but if we act individually and independently, then we'll actually harm the outcomes we seek to achieve because we are aligned in what we want to do, not necessarily in how we're doing it, and I think that desperately needs to change. So thank you to everybody who participated in the meeting today, thank you to all the Commissioners. These are tough choices, and I, I agree with Chair Askew, Chair Root Askew, that you know, it would be swell if we could all just get on the phone or, or get a cup of coffee and hammer all these issues out before we had a meeting, but that's not fair to the public and it necessarily creates blind spots for us because we can't ask those questions and have that collaboration, and so certainly not meant to be, you know, acrimonious or, or underhanded, but in order to comply with law and do, do the public's business in public, there are some opinions that are valid and well-heard, and we will continue to resolve them as we march toward the future, so thank you so much.
Thank you, and Chair Ballastros, any final comments or reflections on today's meeting before we?
I just want to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors, thank you Chair Root Askew. We received the recommendations and we will work to resolve and work alongside with all of you and especially because serving our fellow county community, and thank you to all the directors that were able to attend the meeting. And we'll all look forward to working and progressing and providing affordable housing to our families in Monterey County. Thank you.
Thank, thank you so much. And with that, we will adjourn the joint meeting of the Board of Supervisors, Housing Authority and Housing Development Corporation and recess the Board of Supervisors back into a closed session for some additional discussion. I wish everyone a joyful, healthy holidays. I want to remind everyone that we worked really hard, you're seeing that there's shortages of testing for COVID throughout the country, but in Monterey County, you, you can't, you can't drive across town without us seeing a free COVID testing sign, so please take advantage of those free testing sites, keep your neighbors and your family healthy, and we look forward to reconvening back here again after the new year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you Monterey County team, thank you AV and IT for everything you all do to keep our meetings running. We appreciate you Alex, we appreciate you Misty. We appreciate, I'm not sure who's running the clerks here, but thank you all, have a great holidays. Bye.
Thank you so much, bye.